Mayor Dieter.
Here.
Matt Rett.
Here.
Walander.
Here.
Crystal Fu.
Here.
Betty Nice.
Here.
Alex Yomich.
Here.
Lady Ann Fretchen.
Here.
Carrie Lindell.
Here.
We're in session. Approval of the agenda?
Also move to approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
Motion made by Betty and second by Carrie to approve the agenda as printed and circulated. Any questions or correction? Hearing none. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion, Carrie. Approval of the minutes September 8th, 2014.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 8th.
Second.
Motion made by Walleye, second by Carrie to approve the minutes of September 8th, 2014. Any questions or corrections of the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion, Carrie. Citizen input, nothing at this time. Finance and purchasing review of vouchers. We have the general fund of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Also move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mel, second by Bob to approve the general fund of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. Is there any questions or corrections of the general funds at this time?
What's the storm sewer cleaning?
That's annual cleaning that they do. They'll have the televiser come in and then do some jetting.
Okay, so it is cleaning or it's for the INI project?
No, it's an annual thing that's done.
I should pay more attention.
Any other discussion on the general fund? Hearing none. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion, Carrie. Item number two, reserves of three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty cents.
Also move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mel, second by Walleye to approve the reserves of three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty cents. Any questions or corrections of the reserves? Hearing none. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion, Carrie. Contingency of five thousand fifty dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Larry, second by Mel to approve contingency of five thousand fifty dollars. Any other questions or corrections of this? Hearing none. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion, Carrie. Tip expenditures of five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
I assume we approve the expenditures of five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
I'll second.
Motion made by Bob and second by, um...
Crystal.
Crystal? You just got your name here and all.
I know, you just got it.
To approve tip expenditures of five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy cents. Any questions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion, Carrie. Police department reviewing the license application, hyper operator license new as Courtney Orth and Wendy J. Allen.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mel, second by Carrie to approve the new operators of Courtney Orth and Wendy J. Allen. Any questions or correction? Hearing none. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion, Carrie. Review of payroll. Okay, as of September 5th, 2014, amount of forty-two thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. And September 19th with the amount of forty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-eight cents.
I'll make a motion to approve payroll.
Second.
Motion made by Walleye, second by Betty to approve the payroll as indicated. Any questions or corrections of the payroll? Hearing none. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion, Carrie. In your packet you had a homeowner on 316 and 318, these are two lots, South Francis Street. Special assessment request. Laurie, you would like to speak on that?
Um, sure. The owner of this property has asked that we allow a longer period for him to pay his special assessment of three to eight years versus the five years. That's allowed per special assessment policy. He also asked that I give to you the minutes of the January 14th, 2013 special meeting where this project was talked about. And that he's, the reason why he's requesting it is at that time he was under the understanding that he could make a longer, a request for a longer period of time of the council. Utility commission is aware of this. I did talk to them about it last week. They're... They didn't take a formal action on it, but they, the talk on the table by the utility commission was that they wanted to see that the five-year capital plan be followed. Or a special assessment policy be followed.
I think the comment that he, the underline in yellow where it says Mayor Dieter assured these property owners in attendance that City Council is willing to work with the affected property owners. Chuck Skinador, 316, said he would like to receive that in writing from the city. Yeah, well, we did say that. And it was, is a comment that we made during the utility commission meeting. We're willing to work with them, but we still have statutes that we said we were going to go from three years to five years. And that's what, that's what we meant by working with the property owners, for clarity. So, um, I guess, I guess I believe that we should stay with the five years and let the five years run out. And if they have problems after that, if we extend it out, then we're just going to get ourselves in a, in a situation where the bill, the system is not going to work the way we designed it to work.
Well, isn't working with them meaning instead of having it upfront, we'll work with you to give you a longer payment or give you a payment?
Well, here's the thing. This bill, this just came into effect. Okay, so there was no money paid from anybody on South Francis Street that asked for help, okay? So that's one of the things that, you know, that's why I'm a little puzzled at this time, why he's asked for extended. He had, he just received it. You know, so...
So, so if he doesn't pay it in the five years, what happens?
It becomes a special charge on property tax bill.
So he pays an interest?
If he doesn't pay at the end of five years, if he has anything that's...
Let's say he pays a thousand dollars a year and says that's all I can afford.
Right.
And he's got whatever, two, three thousand left.
That would then get charged as a special charge onto his property tax bill, which is then due at the first installment at the end of January.
So he'd be doing six years anyway.
Right.
You're saying?
Right. Right, yeah, if you look at it that way.
Yeah.
So basically, you just try to get as much paid as you can by then.
The last year, which must be the sixth year, really.
Right.
And there's no more interest charges?
Um, just, yeah, it's whatever that interest would be, is charged, you know. Whatever, one percent above what we...
One percent, I guess.
Right, so the balance due, then he would get that last interest charge on there and not all would go on to his property tax bill.
So the interest charges for what?
The remaining balance.
For the remaining balance.
Right, right. Which is with all the installments. So you take the, you take it and spread it out for five years in increments, installments. The first one is free, you know, meaning what it is without interest. The second one, you take the balance due, interest, apply it to that and even that all to installment payments then. So it's always whatever balance is due is what the interest is applied on to it.
Okay. So it isn't on the, it isn't on the amount? They didn't say they paid five hundred dollars one year and the next year they paid more, so it doesn't, it's even all the way through?
Right.
And we, oh, we did this, we did change the, to make it easier, three to five.
Right.
Yeah. I just think with all the special assessment projects we've got going on, we're best not to make any changes to this ordinance at this time because we really need that money because that's what we want to use to go forward for doing the other INI projects.
So you put that for motion.
I'll move that we deny the request.
I'll second.
Motion made by Betty and second by Carrie to stay within the parameters of the, of the five years that was stated from our special assessment from the utility commission for 316 and 318, South Francis Street. Is there any other questions or corrections of that?
There's only the one bill. 318 doesn't have a bill besides 316, does it?
No, he's got that side lot by the, there.
Yeah.
So it's two parcels that he's being assessed for, but one bill. And that was what you got in your packet.
Is there any other discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion, Carrie. We'll be doing budget review at this time. Brooklyn Communities Center, Park Recreation, Aquatic Budget. Hi, Anna, how are you? Get our boilers going?
Um, they will be starting up tomorrow.
Boy, I bet you you're happy yet?
Yep.
You shut that little heater off?
Just in time for fall, right?
It's supposed to get warm all week.
I don't, yeah.
Yeah, well, you're going to end up, she's not wearing, so I would have liked.
Anybody have any questions? I guess under Community Center, that was increased after we met with Park and Rec, a little bit more due to the gas and electrical bill that they increased. They wanted that increased more. They heard there's supposed to be a pretty significant increase on electricity next year, so that was increased there. But otherwise, everything is pretty much the same or trying to make it less?
One question I have, when I was reviewing your, your operation budget here. I took it right down by the DPW and I looked at those chips, you know, because we know we have budget money in here for that. Is those chips because they're too dirty or is it too coarse?
Yeah, yeah, they have to be gone through the machine like three or four times and they can only, I think they can only double chip or single chip.
Yeah, that's what I thought because I went and checked them.
It's more of a hardwood.
Pretty coarse for the kids, don't it?
And then you get all the greens and everything and this is just wood. It's a hardwood that they get.
And that's fine. I was just wanting to try to look at, see.
Oh, yeah, we'll look at that.
I see the revenue is going to be down.
Yeah, because we really have a hard time finding people to do fitness classes. And I thought, well, you know, put it down to where it possibly would be and then if we get people in here that we can start, you know, generating more income, then it would go up, so.
So, big picture here, a few years ago, we made a decision that we would operate the BCC as long as it stays within a certain range of cost to the taxpayers. And it looks like we're moving away from that. It's going to cost, we said about ten hundred and fifty thousand to the taxpayers. If we look at the numbers here, we're probably up to two hundred and thirty thousand. So, I guess my question is, what do we do? What's the big, is there a plan? Do we do fundraisers or what do we do to earn more revenue?
Yeah, well, we can keep, we keep offering programs and, you know, some go and some don't, you know. Our biggest thing though is, like I said, is our fitness classes are down and we're trying to find instructors, so there's other programming also that we'll try, so.
Just...
Right, no, I understand.
You have that motion in effect and we need to be conscious of it. People will be asking, when their tax bill comes, how it comes, it keeps going up. You guys made an agreement.
Well, I, I, I think, I think the Park Recreation Committee is doing the best what they can for what we're trying to work with. But as we know, many of us who are sitting in this room, we had many, many citizens in here saying to raise the prices and so on and so forth. And they were going to use it and they were going to do fundraisers. Well, some of those people, and I'm going to say it again and again and again, that fundraisers fell through the hole. None, none of those people stepped up to the plate and helped us out. We had a couple, tried for the 501(c)(3), Chief Minion, myself, Linda and a few of us, but, and Heather, it just didn't work. So what do we do?
Well, I just want to get back to...
No.
No, I understand.
Where we were.
Well, but on the flip side too, she, she shouldn't be projecting revenue that...
Oh, I know. We got to be realistic.
Yes, so you got to be realistic.
We need to be realistic.
Right.
You know, big picture.
Yeah, she could put it out here and say, yeah, we're going to get this, but then nothing happens, you know, something falls apart.
I understand, and I'm all for keeping it open.
True, but all of a sudden I have a bunch of citizens here again. I can just about name who they'll be.
We're at a hundred and sixty-two thousand for the Community Center for next year.
For what, is that right?
The expenses. Just the Community Center.
Okay.
That's what it says in here.
When I looked at the numbers, it looked different to me.
Because of recreation, are they just considering the Community Center or are they considering all the parks, recs?
Well, they got swimming pool condition.
Oh, yeah.
So I came up to two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, which is pretty good, ways from a hundred and fifty thousand. And I'm not saying that the numbers, you know, shouldn't be increasing, but...
Hopefully, once we get all the work done, we'll, we'll have more use.
I have a question on wages and salaries too. Are you going more part-time or something? If you go on swimming pool, salaries, wages. Like for line for part-time goes from forty-one thousand to forty-nine thousand, yet it says two percent. Well, it's more like nineteen percent. I'm comparing year end.
I didn't, I didn't touch that. That was from, um, Ellers?
Yeah, that was Ellers' increase on part-time aquatic, but and salaries split between aquatic and recreational.
Yeah.
And then also...
My question, my question is the part-time is going up eight thousand dollars, according to this.
But aren't, isn't something in our part-time with the pool?
What?
Aren't we having so many part-time now with the pool?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sean will leave, uh, not Sean.
Well, I put, yeah, well, Crystal, Crystal, part of that is in there, that I moved out of the, um, dirt, out of the part-time wages, I took four thousand out and put it, it was five thousand last year and I moved that into the part-time wages.
Right.
And then there was the two percent, I'm sorry.
It was listed separately before, no?
Okay.
The aquatic.
So is there going to be any, is the BCC committee going to, I guess, should be looking at what can we do to make more revenue or cut expenses or have a longer-term plan to try to address? That's what I would hope would happen.
To the Park and Rec Committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll do sight of it pretty soon. We're back in the hot seat again.
I guess we look at it different ways, you know, the cost of fuel, electricity. I don't think being down for the pool repair hurt us because we were paid by insurance, so we didn't lose no revenue on that, right?
We didn't have revenue. We didn't have revenue.
Nobody gave you to swim.
We didn't have, come on.
We didn't, oh, I...
They didn't have swim lessons.
Yeah, but we didn't...
Insurance didn't cover it.
I got that wrong, okay?
No, they wouldn't cover that.
They would not cover that.
Only the cost to bus the swim team.
Right.
Was covered.
Okay.
Yeah, your general operating.
That was done, alright.
Yeah, that was done. So, 2014 year end is going to look really whack down, but...
Not much we can do.
Nope.
We just have to understand that.
Right, that was the year that...
Just live with it, so it's kind of realistic, that's the way it is.
Is there any other questions or concerns that you want Anna to look into before we finalize that in the next couple of weeks or in the next month?
I see in the capital budget, we did put in ten thousand for driveway around and things like that, which I agree, we got to start planning. But I guess if there was an area to cut, where would we do it?
What, for capitaling it?
No, well, I guess capital, we could say.
Capital is probably what we're good for.
Right.
I'm just thinking, is there any ways to shorten that cost to the taxpayers somewhere or something? And again, I may look back to my other thought, studying and what else can we do. And I know they cut it pretty much to the bones before.
Yeah, it's not flush. We're going to go back and look at everything.
I think it'd be better once we get the whole thing, see the whole picture.
Yeah, well, then you'll have a better idea, then you'll know.
Then we'll know.
And once I have it together, I can do that one spreadsheet that I've done in years past that say, okay, now the operating cost of the, the, what's all in the BCC, this is what your dock, your bottom levy amount is, the average taxpayer pays this much per thousand. Does that help you in making decisions too?
Well, we don't see the big picture here yet.
Right, no, we don't. But in October, when we have that, then we'll, that'll, I'll be able to pull that out a little more clearer for you.
It may come to, everybody's going to have to cut two percent, three percent or something.
Find an area that you can find an area, right. But what Ann did is, and other departments have done the same thing, is they took the projections that Ellers had in their five-year financial management plan and tweaked it, as she said, you know. She's saying revenues are going to be less because she's not finding instructors. On the operating side, the expenditure side, she's saying Park and Rec suggested increasing gas electricity because that will, we're hearing there's going to be a price increase there. So she didn't really do a whole lot different with, with the budget based on the Ellers' financial five-year plan. The areas that you should think about, okay, if the Park and Rec is saying we want to start putting money aside for capital improvement needs, just as every department's going to start saying, how are we going to finance those needs? Something to think about. Because Ellers is saying if you're going to continue with your, your five-year plan and the utility commission is saying, yes, we want you to fix the infrastructure, which we know we need to do. How are we going to finance those other capital needs that we have in the city? Probably won't have your answer for 2015's budget.
Because that wasn't discussed at all really.
No, because the focus kind of went right to the INI, yeah, because of where we are with the DNR.
Is there any other thoughts or for Ann to look at? Okay, well, thank you, Ann, very much. Public, Department of Public Works. Oh, Dennis will come in.
No, Dennis didn't really do much at all either with the operating budget. It's pretty much spelt out the same as, as what Ellers had projected. The only difference that, from what Ellers had and what Dennis and I worked on together is where we thought time would be best spent on different projects. But the overall amount of, of wages and benefits is the same, it's just allocated differently in the budget depending on where Dennis is going to work on projects. Next year, he is wanting to get back on to a, more of a semi-annual routine of checking sidewalks for cracks, tripping. We did have an incident that happened this year, so he's going to get back on that schedule of checking sections of the city every other year.
No, so basically what they did, Laurie, with the budgets this year is they took the two percent that Ellers told them and just raised everything by two percent?
We took what Ellers had and I plugged it in for them and I gave it to them and I said, tell me what, what you need different. Ellers did two percent on wages and benefits, nine percent on health insurance and one percent everywhere else.
So, so they didn't really review it to see really if that's what they need in the area?
Yeah, they did, they did, yeah, and then they made adjustments.
Okay.
So some areas, you know, like I noticed in the library, Chris had changed some that went down based on what Ellers had because she's saying, I don't need that much.
Okay.
So...
Good, because when I hear that two percent, you know, they went by Ellers, I thought.
No.
I hope we're reviewing it a little to make sure that it is an overage.
One thing I, when I was reviewing this, Laurie. There was some discussion of, right now, we pay somebody to go up to the weed bed and take it out, you know. And we rent equipment and I noticed through here that we don't put any money for our equipment rental, you know, like item number 365. And we, we rent out from Kempin, the back hole and whatever, like tearing that house down and stuff. And I was just kind of wondering if we should start allowing, we should put in some monies for that. Because we do the weed bed, it's going, it's going to be cheaper. This year, we've been out for how much, twenty, twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, it was big dollars and Dennis feels he could do it for less than that, with their labor and their trucking and everything for maybe six. I'm not sure, you know, somewhere in there, but, so that'd be a big savings to us, you know, for, if we don't have rental equipment in here.
But it almost has to be in the budget somewhere, right? Because they're paying somebody for it.
Well, that, that project is on the utility end.
Yeah.
Right.
It comes out of that.
Right.
But I mean, if we're paying somebody, there's still something in there to be paying that person, so we'd still have money. It isn't like we're, we have to...
But here's, here's another thing I'm looking at right now. When I went to the mayor's conference here last month, I was talking to a mayor from a different community. And instead of us having, you know, like the big payloader, they, they rent their, their, from Caterpillar or John Deere. And I asked, talked to Laurie and Dennis about that, if we should look into that. And that was part of bringing up, you know, for, you know, rental equipment. It seems like that city over there, it said it works very, very well because they put so many hours in on piece of equipment. And then if something goes haywire, they come in and replace the equipment and there's no questions asked. I, I think maybe that's something we should be... Yeah, and that's something that we should look at. And that, again, is...
With our, but with our reserves, we'd be okay there because...
Well, you have some money set aside for that.
We have money set aside.
Use some of that, yeah.
Just keep it, keep going on it, depending on what it costs to run the equipment. When you get some costs of selling and some stuff off too that you would have that extra revenue to put in your reserve.
So how do you stay here? Or how do you, you work with an implement?
Yeah.
Yes.
Reisters know, what you call it.
Reisters know, Caterpillar people will come out of Appleton.
What you call it down here, Potter.
Yeah.
You just go to them and see what they offer you, because what you call it, a lot of places do that.
Yeah, it's coming to be more and more, turn and burn, you know.
You keep your big pieces of equipment that you have, like the dump trucks.
Much to buy them. Even car industry is getting more people are renting or leasing cars instead of buying.
Yeah.
Especially like, people don't, don't drive as much, it's cheaper from the rent. Or lease the vehicle because they don't put on that many miles. Anyway, I was looking at both these things here. And I think maybe we should look into do something with electricity bills by get different light fixtures for one thing.
Sure, and we've been making those adjustments as we can.
Even the fluorescents, you can, you can change these out to, it's like ten watts. I think to thirty-two now.
Yeah.
But I think you can get, get them down to like ten, which would cut down a lot. I know these ain't on, no, T8's are thirty-two. And you can get different ballasts now that do a lot better job of turning on and off. Because the ballast is what draws a lot of heat, causes a lot of problems. Because I'm seeing, that's a hell of an increase we've been seeing on our electric bills. Gas shouldn't change. According to what I understand, the gas should stay the same because of such, such an abundance of it now. So gas should be cheaper. And, but electricity, yeah, it's going to change mainly because all we got around here are pulling plants, which use coal. Our EPA wants to shut them down, so, you know, that's going to... But weakened conserve by, it's going to cost... know, that's gonna, but we can conserve by, it's gonna cost us a few bills, but we cut our electric bills, just like we do on the streetlights.
We should, we should continue the street thing too.
Right. Like we can get it, even get rid of forresters. They have other lights we can put in the ceilings. So maybe we need to have someone look at that.
That does bring a question to my mind on, on the D P W garage. If you look at two twenty-one gas for electricity, year end is gonna be ninety-two, ninety-nine. It's projected for next year, six thousand. And we're talking electricity going up, it's projected to three thousand dollar.
Some doesn't jive there.
Some don't jive, yeah. Was there a reason? But if you go back to.
Oh, I seen that was one of Ellers increases, and I think they just took it off the budget amount. But I'll take a look at that. I'll check that year end total.
Cause if that's not six thousand, then it's whatever, twelve thousand or whatever.
Yeah, it'll be a short call. With the streetlights, we only own the four streetlights on Main Street, so there's limits to what we can do. But we have worked with public service in years past and looked at intersections and downsized the wattage.
Yep.
So that project was done a couple of years ago. Gary, you and I kinda worked with, with Foleski on that. So those are little things we've been trying to do.
I know our buildings could use a lot. They're in sat shape. And when you have lights out like that, when they're out, it costs more.
If you look at, um, in the back page there, it's Department of Public Works, equipment replacement, uh, those are scary numbers, aren't they? I mean, but you look at the year of these vehicles. Pardon me?
This one here.
This one.
That's what we'll, you know, what we're working with now. And that just comes up every year. Um, right now, I think, I don't know what it, which one is it? The, the nineteen ninety?
Nineteen ninety dump.
Dump truck. Right now, they have wire problems in the transmission with two times. It's not the transmission, it's the wiring that goes into the transmission. And they can't figure out why that's happening. So that's costing them, I don't know what the heck that costs for last time. Couple bucks, like dollars.
That one's gonna be replacing the problem.
That's what he's suggesting, yeah. I told Dennis, I said, if you could pick out two pieces of equipment that streets will need attention. He said, definitely the nineteen ninety dump truck. Replace that. He said with the, the back all, if we get the, the box replaced, he feels that we can get more years out of that, yeah.
Well, the, the vacuum cleaner, I spoke to Dennis and Lori on this too. Uh, we, we have, we have two qualified people who are wood welders, Joe and, and Dennis. Um, if we buy a Plasmark machine, which run around two thousand dollars, and Dennis would remove that, uh, from the, um, sweeper, he would take that out there, they'd use the support, just take off the metal and refabricate that. And, and one of my suggestions was, um, either we could do that, have one guy do it in, on the hour time, or those two could do it after time, cause it costs us wrong, as you see in there, uh, redo the box, it's eight thousand, I believe.
He said eight to ten, yeah.
Yeah, eighteen, nineteen ninety-nine back sweeper, replace box, eight to ten thousand. I think, um, to be, Joe and Dennis, I think they're qualified that they can replace that box. I think they have confidence they can do that, do all the welding. And then we could either have the work during, you know, third time, and then we can contract with them and have them redo that whole box themselves. Of course, we have buy the Plasmark, which, which is.
They can rent?
Huh? Well, and Aposte could rent. But that's things that I think our city has to look at. We have qualified people to do things, and we're always looking to buy new and going out there and, and, and looking at ways to purchase things. And we have qualified people that we can give them a few dollars more, um, or have them do it, have them do the fabrication, which Joe is very good, very good at fabricating. So I mean.
I would like to see those in rent before buying because it's another.
And that's fine. Right.
Storage issues and that we aren't gonna use that often.
But I mean, it's things that we need to look at. We have to go out and broaden our views and going out there looking at renting equipment and what, what is the, what is the best for us, for the short-term use or the long-term use?
Don't we do others, some other cities or towns with that bag?
Yeah.
Well, that, that street sweeper is used a lot.
So if the back was at Brits or something, we could rent it, they could rent it, we could all.
Don't we do Potter?
Um, he does share one, Town of Brilliant. I'm not sure where else he's at, but he's at quite a few with the street sweeper. Yeah, we bring in maybe three to six thousand of revenue on that, renting that piece of equipment out.
Or trade out. Sometime we do some work for a town, and then the intern got some equipment that we use, hey, can you come over and help us? So that's kinda the force of peace. That works nice. That works real good. But yeah, as the equipment replacement, you can look at how many dollars are, that are there to run what we need in the winter time. And some of the equipment that we have here to use, we use it in winter time. I mean, we park in the garage and that's it, you know, it, it's a kind of a waste.
Do we need to check into the leasing and rental?
Yeah, Dennis says, he's working on that for us.
Yeah. So.
Cause the back haul, how long do we use it in summer?
For what?
The back sweet sweeper.
That's used.
Oh, he gets.
Yeah, till winter.
Is it winter as well?
Uh, no, it's used in fall.
Yeah.
Like it's in fall.
Yeah, then he'll winterize it and that's it.
Eight months, uh, that turns old.
Yeah.
It almost seems like renting would be a whole lot cheaper than spending two hundred thousand.
But then we also have to remember, if we're getting revenue on it, we have to make sure we factor in the revenue that we, we would be using.
Yeah.
Right, to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, is there any other items that, um?
One question.
Yeah, that's.
Does the revenue from that, Lori, go into the reserve for the replacement of it?
Well, we've just been putting it under general fund right now. Um, I guess if you wanted to start doing that.
Depending on how much.
Right. Yeah.
It'd be nice to measure that.
Yeah.
To know what it is.
To see if we're really getting enough, if it's worth doing it.
Yeah. What is the revenue? Is it three thousand? Is it five thousand? What is it?
That should really go into the replacement.
Should go into somewhere where we can identify.
If they have to buy them tires and stuff, there's tires when you show rent, you're gonna wear all the sugar. Or other parts of it, yeah.
Sure, we can do that.
Looking at the insurance, health insurance, is that projected that we're gonna be?
That went down, that went down.
It went down?
It went down. Got that great news.
It's mine up there.
Yep, got that great news last week, Thursday.
So that's gonna be backed out of holdings?
Mm-hmm, yep, that'll be backed out, yes, it went down.
So we don't have to see that increase at all. First thing I was gonna, after that, if we're even saying five percent, uh, we can't increase anybody's payment, can we?
As far as what, their portion that they pay?
Their percentage. You can't increase that.
Well, right now, it's set in your policy that way, which mirrors the union contract that we have, which is the police union.
But everybody else.
Right.
There's no union.
Right. Then you could, yeah, you could.
Yeah, cause in my, in my opinion, if we saw an increase, I'd like to see it split.
Yeah, no, that went down, oh, approximately for the lowest qualifying plan, about, I wanna say it was about sixty dollars a month decrease, yeah.
Cause we're gonna have to start sharing most costs with our employees.
Yeah, and we have fourteen people taking the health insurance plan.
When we get a new form, then it'll all be changed over.
Yep. I'm glad you brought that up, Larry, cause I wasn't gonna tell.
That was.
Oh, you both did. No, it went down, that was great news.
Is there anything that stands out here now that you want to, uh, Lori, follow up on with Dennis, on, on anything that we discussed tonight on the D P W? Again, I guess like till we get the final numbers, we'll give us a bigger picture of where we are, I'll go and do this again.
I just have a thought, you have the compost that's out there. What are we doing with it? It kinda sits there. I thought we were like selling some of that, or is that?
Well, what he does is the big brush pile, he'll try to sell that off if he can. Um, most times what's there is taken. You know, chipping especially goes, people do take that.
But all the compost that's back.
Yeah.
Keeps growing and growing.
What do they do with the leaves and the foam?
Those in the compost.
That goes in the compost, yeah.
Did you get money, huh?
Right.
Just think years ago, what happened, we used to, used to have tipping fees. Remember, you used to be down by the least about a three-figure plan? Big boxes, tons, look at the money that we spent, we had been doing that years ago. You know? Uh, I, I believe Dennis is pretty, Dennis does a pretty good job up here at the D P W, looking to wait to save money to purchase different things and, you know, and like I said, Dennis and Joe fabricate stuff like this for the plows and, uh, so Dennis is pretty good. He watches what he, how his money's being spent. You know, so I, I give him compliments on that one too, so. Okay, is there any other discussion on D P W then? Okay, thank you, Lori. Um, oh, next one we have, Library. Hi, Chris. You're up. That's it? Chris said that's it?
The county always gives you that much money every year, don't they? The county gives you that much money every year, revenue? The county.
The county, about, a little bit, more than last year.
That, that you get every year, huh?
Yeah, it varies, it fluctuates with whatever our rural circulation is, is each year.
Is there any questions up, Chris, on the library, anybody? Looks pretty good.
I guess one thing I, I guess wanna point out is we put in the new energy controls for our heating and cooling system. And ready this summer, we're noticing a big improvement in the electricity expense, so that's one of the areas where we see. I don't know what it'll be for a whole year, but.
I do have a question. Color copier.
I what?
Color copier. There's one in for the next three years. Is that right?
It might be, I don't know.
Well, that you, that's your rental, right? For your copy machine? Is that, that's your copier lease?
Oh, two, two more years.
Yeah.
Yeah, two more years dead on the contract.
Or it's leased for life?
Yeah.
Leased for five years and sixteen seventy per year.
That includes maintenance, includes tolls, applies, includes the whole package.
Yeah, copiers aren't cheap. I don't know. Especially when you got public use in it, like at the library. That's the place people go to use.
Yeah.
Copier actually makes the revenue.
Yeah, a little bit.
Not much.
No, it's there, a little bit.
Any other discussion for, for Chris or anything to add to?
I did one, I, I just noticed in twenty seventeen, a replacement of computer chairs. Do you like sell the old ones or are they junk, junk? Or how do you, where you, I, in twenty seventeen, you have replacement of computer chairs? There's twelve of them or whatever. Do you sell the old ones and, or how do you go about, what do you do with that?
The public ones, we did, uh, try to think how old they are. Again, if they're in better shape, we push it out. We're just kind of, you know, we realize at some point, the chairs aren't gonna be, be in as good of a shape, they get heavy use.
But do you, do you sell them, the old ones then, or do you just junk them, or how do you?
What?
Do you sell them or do you throw them away when you, the old ones?
Depends what shape they're in. One, one year, we just gave them to the thrift store, you know. And I think the last ones we gave away were pretty bad. I mean, the rollers didn't work, the question was all, pretty well shot.
That's what we're saying, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wasn't sure what happened to the old stuff when you bought new stuff, you know.
Any other questions, Chris? Okay, thank you. Okay, no more questions, don't Chris? Well, I, we're down with the budget at this time. Uh, protection of persons and property.
Do we wanna go over the fire department budget? It's here.
Does anybody have it with them?
Yeah, I don't.
I don't. Yeah, he's, he's here because he couldn't make the last meeting, so, and so is right. I mean, they're just here to kinda give you an update beginning of the list of the agenda, but you can, other protections of persons and property. Rich does have an appointment tonight on the council agenda. He'd like the council to make, of a firefighter. So I don't know if you wanna ask if they have any questions of those two, fighter ambulance?
Yeah.
Troy, all your reports I emailed to our council, so they had them.
The only real significant thing, I, I don't know, did you get the budget or the finances for this month? I just got them today. I don't know if you guys got them or not.
Um, I don't that I did. If you got them today, no.
Okay. The one big thing you'll notice, um, there's a line for reserve adjustments, which is our write-off, so we anticipate we're gonna write off. We actually have been doing really well. Last month, we collected in fourteen hundred and forty dollars, which we kinda figured we'd be writing off. Um, so that was one thing Jack had wanted me to point out to you guys, that the money we're, we're anticipating writing off the last couple of months, we've actually been collecting more than we did. So, um, on our operating expenses or on the operating income last month, we were, uh, in the red, like seventy-seven hundred dollars. We're still in the red, uh, only forty-five hundred this month. And a lot of it is because we're collecting back some of that that we anticipated we weren't gonna get. Um, and our call volume is up significantly. Uh, early in the year, we were averaging twenty-five calls a month. The last, uh, two months were almost forty calls. And we're on track for that again, uh, in September here, so we're, we're crawling out of the hole and going back uphill, so, um, that was the only thing we really wanted to point out to you guys, other than that, if you have any questions. Thank you. The rig is lettered, if you guys haven't had a chance to see it.
Drove around it several times.
It's really sharp, I like it.
Yeah, tell John he did a hell of a job.
We've gotten a lot of compliments on that from other services and hospitals. It's, it really, it's a sharp-looking rig and it's, it's getting positive attention, which is always welcome, so.
John's gonna have to open up shop somewhere.
He did a very good job on that. We had a delay in getting it done, but, uh, the end product was worth the wait to get it done.
People ask me if we're gonna have a mark in ones for a long term. We're working on it.
You know, the, people notice them more without markings and with markings. Winter time, I might not agree with that, but we got more, more inquiries about not having labels on it than after it got lettered. Thank you, guys.
Chief, you got anything to add or?
No, not really. Nothing, I'm gonna, everything I'm gonna bring up, this could be.
Okay, that, that's fine, thank you. Um, item number eight, uh, city buildings and grounds, two thousand fifteen, road mainstream, the Town of Brilliant. Uh, you know, this is, we do this every year. Um, I guess the one that's highlighted in yellow, and I'll read it, the city shall respond for maintenance repair of the open cut section, G H two W six four seven on Lake Road, well, number five, for the next ten years, two thousand twenty-four, to include retained in any. any settling blacktop, bring back the basic and re-topping. I guess that's, I don't blame them for doing that, because we, we, we look for well number six, that's going to go to the west of there. And we might open that up again, so it's not a, it's just a mutual agreement we've been having for years, so. We just need a motion to accept the agreement.
I also move to accept the agreement.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mel, said goodbye Wally, to approve the agreement with the Town of Brilliant for the two thousand fifteen road maintenance. Uh, is any, any other questions or discussion?
There's just that little section right there.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's normal warrant there.
Yep.
So. Any other discussion? Hearing that, I'll say aye. Close and more to period. Personnel, there's nothing at this time. Um, the only thing we're doing right now is, um, we're getting some, um, feedback for our community development director. Lori got a few in, I guess. So. So we got some, we got some good ideas and Mel and I and Lori, one day we'll sit down and hash it out. I'd like to get this in place as soon as possible, so we don't lose anything, because we've got a lot of things that are coming up, you know?
What is the target? When are we supposed to have all their?
Last week Friday.
Last week Friday?
Yeah.
So we should have everything?
I have everything, yeah. I have them. So now I'll, I'll call you two and see if we can schedule some interview times.
Uh, any new business, anything else anybody want to discuss?
Yes. The other, well, I had the big RD behind my truck and it pulled up here by Madison just before it turned on the beam. And I had to back up because a car was coming through. There was no way I could get through there. And even with, uh, just the truck, there's a car parked on both sides of that street. Before you hit beam. You almost got to come to a stop and crawl through there to get through. I think we should make one side of that road now parking. Because you got a bunch of teachers parking on that street now.
Oh, because of the?
Yes, sure.
Oh, gotcha.
It's very tight.
On Madison.
Because not being able to park in front anymore.
They, why can't they park in the back?
There's enough room behind the school back there.
There is plenty of room behind the school because I was looking.
Cleveland, yeah, it'd be Cleveland.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
There you go.
They're doing it on Main Street too, right in front of my house. There, I mean, I know my neighbor parks in front of his house, but right in front of my house, every day there's at least a car in front of mine and the one to the north of me too.
That's the only one that I notice.
Why can't they park in the back? That's what we said too last year. Why are they parking in the front parking lot anyways, you know? Yeah, now on the road, I know.
Well, maybe, um, I'll, I'll ask Lori to ask the officer Kurt, that somebody to look into that or get all of the school representation, the principals or the superintendent and clarify that a little bit. And you agree, because there's students there coming across, walking across, you know? If it's getting to be a safety hazard, then that we should correct that and agree with Betty, then we'll put a two-hour parking there.
I think you do it anyways. I don't think that's right, that they can't park in the parking lot.
Well, there's room back, there's all.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. Why can't they park there?
Because when McMahon, when Ron Wolf was at our meeting at the planning commission, he showed us the, 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 the plan out there. It was ample room. There was more than enough room for all the teachers to park their cars there. The reason why they parked there is so they could just walk in a little corner and walk into there.
Yeah, no, I agree.
That's about four cars. That's what I've seen in the last, in the last two days.
Okay. We, we'll look into that. Thank you, Larry, for bringing that up. Any other new business? Need number ten, eleven?
I move to adjourn.
Motion made by Mel, second by me, uh, Bob, whoever's got the loudest. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned until seven o'clock.